Call to order for the regular meeting of June 6th for the Oakdale Planning Commission. Luke for the roll call.
Pearson.
Here.
Willenbring.
Here.
Campbell is absent. Stolarzki.
Here.
McCauley is also absent. Tyata?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Thank you, and for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agendas, and one have any additions or discussion on the agenda? If not, I look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Approval of the minutes, has everyone looked at the May 2nd, and does anyone have any change? See none, I look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Open forum, this is a time when people in the audience can come forward to make comments on issues, not on the agenda, so if anyone wishes to come forward, I open the open forum. Anyone coming forward? See none, I close the open forum. And we want to hold business of which there is none, so new business, a public hearing for James Ford, 6512 49th Street North, a conditional use permit for a second garage. Max, you're taking it, I guess?
Thank you, Planning Commission, and good evening. So in front of us today, we have a request for a second garage at 6512 49th Street North. This is located by the intersection of Granada Avenue and 50th Street. This is zoned R2 low-density housing, where second garages are allowed via conditional use permit, and one garage is allowed by right. So again, the purpose here is to construct a second garage on their property, and this would be approximately 384 square feet in size. The property as a whole is approximately 0.3 acres, and contains a single-family home with an attached garage. So here we have a more detailed look at the applicant's plans to add a second garage. As you can see, the parcel fronts both Granada Avenue and 49th Street, as well as an alley to the north. An existing driveway is present with accesses to Granada Avenue and the north alley. The proposed garage here would use the existing driveway, so no new accesses would be required to be granted. In the R2 district where this property is located, garages are required to be at least five feet from property lines and 30 feet from corner sidelines on corner lots. Based on the provided plans, which shows the planned garage in the northern end of the parcel highlighted in green up there, these setback requirements would be met. So as a reminder, conditional use permits are subject to certain review criteria found in the city's ordinance. Here's a summary of the review criteria we use in our evaluation. Compliance with the comprehensive plan. Compatibility with zoning. No nuisance effects, no traffic congestion or parking. Uses must be adequately served by public services and infrastructure. No costs or minimal impacts to the environment and natural features on site. And then specifically for second garages or other accessory buildings. The lot cannot be further subdivided with the building on site. No pole barn construction is allowed. No doors can exceed 10 feet in height, and no commercial or industrial uses can occur within the structure. Staff finds that the conditional use permit criteria of the ordinance has been satisfied in this request as detailed in the staff report on file. Staff recommends approval of the request, subject to the following conditions. The garage shall meet setback in height requirements. The garage shall not exceed 400 square feet in size. A building permit must be obtained, and a driveway permit must be obtained. As a reminder, this is a public hearing, and the applicant is here with us in attendance. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions regarding this request, and thank you.
Thank you, Max. Does anyone have any questions? At that point, I'll open up the public hearing for anyone who wishes to come forward to make comment on this. Open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to make comment on this issue? If the applicant is here and would like to make comment, please feel free. You'd state your name and address for the minutes.
James Ford, 6512 49th Street. Basically, it's just for an extra car, and a lot more equipment, snow blowers, a lot of things like that, you know, just like a storage, you know. It seems like, you know, it's enough room and everything, and it'd be out of everybody's way, so... About all I got to say.
Okay, anyone have any questions for the gentleman? I thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from anyone in the audience? Close the public hearing, bring you back. Any final comments from anyone here? Any commissioners? See none, I look for a motion.
I will make a motion to recommend approval of the conditional use permit for an additional garage at 6512 49th Street North.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you very much. Next item is a public hearing on Companion Animal Care, 1480 Helmo Avenue North, Planned Unit Development Amendment, and Conditional Use Permit for a kennel and site plan. Luke, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So like as you mentioned, the site of this property is 1480 Helmo Avenue, so it's on the west side of Helmo, south, located immediately south of the TLC Vet Hospital. The purpose of this request, as you mentioned, is to enable development of the facility, so this specifically is a new animal impound and kennel facility, so there are three land use approvals required for the use. The first one is a CUP, Conditional Use Permit, for the kennel. The second is a site plan, and that is for a review of the technical conformance of the site with the city's zoning standards. And then third is a PUD, Planned Unit Development Amendment, for flexibility from the zoning requirements. And more specifically, the deviations that are being requested here are exterior building materials, reduced parking spaces, and an exemption from the roof requirement for the trash enclosure structure. So the zoning of the site is North Star Mini Storage PUD, so it's just a special type of zoning for this commercial area. Commercial uses are allowed, of course. Kennels are allowed through the conditional use permit process. A little bit of background details on this one, the facility will provide animal impound services to various municipalities in the region. It will feature 30 individual dog kennels, a cat kennel room, a lobby and entrance, a restroom, and storage space. Some property details here, the site is about a little over half an acre, it's vacant size, so there's no trees, no structures there. It's surrounded by businesses, and again, it's immediately south of the TLC Vet Clinic, where my cursor is, and then it will be immediately north of the forthcoming Marlis Early Education Center. Some of you may recall that that approval came through the Planning Commission late last year. And just for reference, the nearest residential properties to this site in particular is about 300 feet to the north, and then 350 feet to the east. So there is some residential structures essentially buffering this site from those residences. Moving on to the site plan, it's a little difficult to see here, but there will be two accesses to the site, so on the right hand of the screen is Helmo Avenue, and then one of the accesses will be off an existing stub from the TLC Vet Clinic, and then there will also be a new access that straddles the south side of this property. It will be a shared access with the Marlis Early Education Center. And there is a recorded easement agreement in place for this new shared access between, again, the site and Marlis. So the building is outlined in red there. It's approximately 2,000 square feet, and buildings that are less than 2,000 square feet do not need to be sprinkled or have a fire sprinkle system. However, if the building is determined to be over 2,000 square feet or is expanded in the future, it does have to be sprinkled, per building code. So the zoning code requires 11 parking spaces for this structure, and the applicant is requesting a deviation from this to allow only eight spaces due to the low volume number of visitors for the site. Staff is amenable to that request because there is an existing shared or cross-parking agreement between this site, the TLC Vet Clinic, and the Marlis site. One of the conditions of approval that we're going to be recommending is what's known as proof of parking. It's essentially an update to the site plan, and the developer would have to designate three additional areas on the site. So in the event, in the future, that there's a change in use, or they just happen to need more parking, that could be done, that could be accommodated on the site. For the trash enclosure, I'll point to where that is with my cursor here. The city engineer, in his review, he recommends relocating it away from, there's a sanitary catch basin just a few feet away. There's maybe some concerns there about preventing spills from seeping into that system and contaminating it. A couple other notes on the trash enclosure, so as required by the zoning ordinance, the enclosure must consist of the same type of materials as the primary structure. So what's being proposed currently is a fence, and that would have to just be updated to match the building, in terms of materials. And like I mentioned, the applicant is requesting a PUD amendment to exclude the roof requirement from the trash enclosure structure. Staff is amenable to that request. Moving on to utilities and infrastructure, the city engineer noted that there are a few updates needed to the civil plans. A lot of these updates are technical in nature, I don't know that I need to get into them, and the developer will just need to address those by updating their civil plans. The city engineer also recommends that an association document be prepared for the shared private storm sewer and sanitary sewer that's going to serve this site, the TLC Vet Clinic, and the North Star Mini Storage Place. So just a little bit of information on that, so it's essentially an agreement for maintenance and repair for that private infrastructure, just to prevent any disputes in the future. Any questions on the site plan before I move on?
One question.
Yes.
I know we're considering updating our city ordinances now.
Yes.
In regards to parking, if that gets changed, do those new ordinances flow through to what's approved, or are they stuck with what's in the plan here that we approve?
Right, so yeah, if, as a result of the future code update, if we change, reduce, more specifically, if we reduce the parking requirements, then they will be held to the new standard, right? They would essentially be grandfathered in, I mean, we wouldn't make them add additional parking if the result of the code update is more parking.
But if we reduced it, those three additional sites, they potentially won't have to worry about in the future, potentially, correct?
No, that's a very good question, so... So the way that we've crafted that condition of approval is at the discretion of the city engineer, so if there is an issue, congestion, traffic flow issues, they just need more parking on the site, it could still be up to the city engineer if three additional spots need to be installed on the site. Yes?
I'm sorry if I missed it, but I wanted to know if there is a relief area that's outside the building, maybe sort of exercise area to outside the building, or no?
For the dogs, yes. Very, yeah, good question, I didn't cover that. So there are outdoor dog run areas on the north, west, and south side of the building, and this is all contained within the site by a vinyl privacy fence. Any other questions before I keep moving on? So here's a look at the landscape plan. The proposed number of trees, it's 33, and the sodding on the non-improved areas, that meets the zoning requirements. However, the planting sizes must be included in the plan, it's just an update that needs to be provided. Also, as required by the zoning code, the landscape plan must be certified by a landscape architect. In terms of site lighting, the developer needs to provide a photometric plan that complies with the code's site lighting requirements. For stormwater management provisions, that is being addressed via infiltration basin on the east side of the site, so where my cursor is, and the developer must work with the Watershed District on obtaining the necessary permits and approvals for the stormwater provisions. Here is a look at the building elevations, so I'll walk through these. In the top right is an image of the east elevation, so that's the public entrance, the public facing portion of the building, fronting Helmo Avenue. The top left image is the west elevation facing the North Star Mini Storage Site. The middle image is the west, or, excuse me, middle image is the south elevation facing the forthcoming Marlis Early Education Center, and then the bottom image is the north elevation, which would face the TLC Vet Hospital. So the zoning code requires for commercial buildings to have a minimum of 70% Class 1 materials, and that is applicable to the exterior building materials. As I mentioned, the developer is requesting the Planned Unit Development Amendment to deviate from this requirement. So we brought a concept plan for this site to the city council back in November of last year, and the discussion held with the council focused mostly on the exterior building materials, and with the city council, they gave us the guidance that they wanted to allow the same level of flexibility for exterior building materials that was granted to the Marlis site to the south. Or specifically, the east elevation, again, facing Helmo Avenue, must consist of at least 70% non-metal Class 1 materials. The north and south elevations must consist of at least 30% non-metal Class 1 materials, and then the west elevation, with limited visibility from the public, would be exempt from the Class 1 requirements. To assist with the review of the exterior building materials, the city hired HKGI. They are a planning and urban design firm to evaluate the building and the different facades and different materials that are proposed, and their analysis, which is included in your packet, concluded that the building must meet the direction provided by the city council. Again, that is to match the same level of flexibility that was given to the Marlis site, immediately to the south. The HKGI memo also commented on the color of the exterior building materials, so although staff is not going to provide feedback on the colors, the Planning Commission is certainly welcome to do so. And in addition to site plan requirements, which I just covered, the kennel aspect of the business is subject to seven specific review criteria that's found in the conditional use permit approval process, and staff finds that all seven criteria have been met, as detailed in the staff report on file. And just to summarize those briefly, the use must comply with the comp plan and zoning code, it must be compatible with the zoning district where it is located, it cannot be detrimental to the surrounding property, it cannot create traffic congestion, it cannot be detrimental to the economic welfare of the city, and it cannot cause adverse environmental impacts. So with all that said, staff recommends approval of the PUD amendment, the conditional use permit, and the site plan, subject to the conditions in the resolution. So if you're following along in the packet, I am on page 39, so the resolution for the site plan. So bear with me, there's 11 conditions here, I'll buzz through those. So the first one is that the developer must obtain approval of a conditional use permit to allow a kennel at the site. Number two, developer must obtain approval for a PUD amendment to deviate from the exterior building materials, reduce parking spaces, and exclude the roof requirement for the trash enclosure. Number three, incorporate a minimum of 70% non-metal Class 1 materials on the east building facade, and 30% non-metal Class 1 materials on the north and south building facades. Number four, revise the trash enclosure to consist of materials that are the same as the primary structure. Number five, relocate the trash enclosure area away from the sanitary catch basin to an area that is upstream of the catch basin. Number six, update the landscape plan to include plant sizes that meet minimum standards of the ordinance, and the landscape plan shall be certified by a landscape architect. Number seven, approval of the site civil construction plans, as approved by the city engineer. Number eight, the developer shall install a sprinkler system if the building is determined to be over 2,000 square feet, or if it is expanded as such in the future. Number nine, approval must be obtained from the fire department for the proposed hydrant and fire department connections. Number 10, a photometric plan must be provided that is compliant with the city's requirements. Number 11, the developer must prepare and record an association document for the private shared storm sewer and sanitary system serving this site, the site to the north, and then the North Star Mini Storage Site to the west. Finally, one more resolution to go through, and this is on page 41, it's the Conditional Use Permit Resolution. Nine conditions of approval here, so I will skip through numbers one and two, because those were covered in the previous one, the previous resolution. Number three, provide proof of parking for up to three additional parking spaces, if they are needed, at the discretion of the city engineer, or if there's an expansion of the site or a change in use. Number four, the outdoor area shall be cleaned daily. Number five, barking or howling dogs shall be returned indoors immediately. Number six, dogs must be supervised at all times when outdoors. Number seven, no more than four play areas with up to 12 dogs each, and one handler per play area are allowed in the outdoor area. Number eight, dogs are allowed in the outdoor play area between the hours of 6:30 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. Number nine, permits and approvals must be obtained from the Watershed District and the Minnesota Board of Animal Health. So with that, I just want to remind the commission that this is a public hearing, the applicant is here in attendance, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Though, in reading through the documents, I could not reach a consensus in my mind as to where we were standing on the proposal and the materials on the east-facing side.
Right.
Is that still a point of discussion, ongoing, or dissension?
So as the condition of approval, if we look back at the resolution for the site plan, staff's recommending on the east facade, 71, or, excuse me, 70% non-metal Class 1 materials. So in looking at the elevations, the updated elevations that the developer provided, it doesn't appear that they're far off, but that's the standard, that's the direction that we received from the city council back at that November workshop, and that's what we're asking that this development be held to.
Because in reading the applicant's request, it's stated right now it's at 64%, that's why I see a little dissension between the numbers, and I wasn't sure if that was clarified yet or not.
Right. Yeah, Mr. Chair, I feel like the applicant has made a lot of progress from the initial submittal. We're almost there, but that's the staff recommendation that we're bringing forward, is to meet that 70% on the east facade, and then 30 on the north and south.
Any other questions from anyone, before I open the public hearing?
On this thing that you had done by HK, I show that metal on the front is about 28% in deviation too, is that what they're planning on doing?
So there is a little bit of a lag there, so the HKGI memo was based on the initial submittal from the applicant, and that was revised. It's not the elevations that I showed on the screen just a moment ago, so there's some numbers, and they don't line up because the developer responded to that memo, if
What you're actually looking at is just from the applicant, not HK.
Oh, I thought that was... All right, my mistake.
Should we allow the applicant to make comment first, or open the public hearing?
Certainly, at your discretion, Chair, but it wouldn't hurt to bring the applicant first.
The applicant would like to come forward and make comment, please do. If you'd state your name and association.
My name is Brett Harmon, I own and operate Companion Animal Control, and own Companion Holdings, which owns this property. I'm not an Oakdale resident, I live in Wisconsin, in River Falls specifically. So a couple of points I'd like to just provide some clarification on. 68% is the total of the Class 1 materials on the east side with the updated, can you bring up the photo of that new elevation?
You can bring up the elevations on the screen, please.
So we added almost double the amount of windows that was originally on the plan, and extended the stone. The original plan with the city council workshop was just a skirt of stone along the bottom of the building, so we've made significant improvements to come close to that 70% request. We also used to have, over the front door, a simple A-frame with two posts type of overhang, and we've updated that to be a more industrial type of look to go with the aesthetics of the area. In terms of color, it is a white building with gray stone, black windows, and then a gray trim, charcoal gray roof, so when you look at the other colors in the area, there's a lot of bright blues and such, so we're, I believe, a really beautiful facility, and modern, but also simple enough that the fencing, which is another point of clarification, is all white vinyl fencing, so it will be a cohesive look instead of multiple different colors. That includes the fencing that is around the trash enclosure. That's not a gauge fencing as was listed within the document, it's the vinyl fencing, so it matches that. And then the north and south sides, so currently the north side has 20% glass to meet the Class 1 request, and the south side is 2.73% glass. So the north elevation, what you see are essentially the most glass, are the two overhang doors, those are in a dog play area. That allows us to open those doors to let dogs come in and out into the enclosed play area, that's all turf to control drainage and ensure cleanliness. The window to the left of one of the overhead doors is in the lobby, so it allows guests to come into the lobby and have a full 360 view of the facility, that they can see the kennels, they can see where the dogs are kept when they're inside, and they can see the outdoor area. That's a safety measure that we have, so that we're able to offer tours that the public may request without having them actually enter the facility. We, as an impound, obviously house a lot of dangerous dogs, dogs that are on bike quarantine, and so for liability reasons, we don't allow the public to go past the lobby, and so the windows there are both functional and aesthetically pleasing. On the south elevation, again, all enclosed by fencing, which the fencing is six foot high, the sidewalls on the entire building are nine foot, so you're really only seeing that very upper portion when you're, you know, driving by or even walking past the building. But the south elevation, all those little doors that you see, those are guillotine doors, so those are stainless steel doors, they're about $400 apiece, they're very strong, very high-end structures, and they lock automatically once they're closed, so that nobody can come in and crawl through the door to get into dogs. We impound dogs pretty regularly through law enforcement, when people are arrested, so that's a security measure that's in place. The windows that you see above there, all of the kennels that are inside on that wall on the south elevation, they're all six foot high, so there's really no reason to have windows that are going across the lower portion of it, they're all supposed to be above that six-foot-high height to allow some natural lighting to come in. So the suggestion of additional Class 1 materials such as stone really doesn't fit the functionality of this building. If we were to put, for instance, say, a lower skirt of stone on the north elevation, that's a dog play yard. Dogs lift their legs, and they pee on the side of your wall. The whole bottom of that building that you see, there's a skirt there, that whole lower half is gray in color, and that allows us to replace that, to keep it clean, to keep it sanitary, and aesthetically, again, pleasing. If we were to put stone there, the ability to disinfect that surface, it's porous, it becomes very much compromised, which is why even in the building, you only have sealed concrete, right? That prevents any of that urine, and that controls the smell. Same for the south elevation, if we were to add stone on the lower portion, or any part of that structure... part of that structurally, it just wouldn't make sense. And it would, in turn, affect the functionality of the building, of what it's meant to do, which is why we added so much stone and glass on the east elevation. The glass will also have a reflective film on it, so that it's the gray color that is cohesive with the stone and allows people to look at the glass but not see in, and allows the dogs to look out. So basically, that's the clarification for the exterior materials. Is there any questions on that specifically?
Anyone have any questions for the applicant?
Okay. The only other point I had looking for clarification is, Luke, in your request, it was to prepare and record an associated document for shared sewer and sanitary sewer system. Can you expand on what it is you're looking for, or...
Yeah, you have to address that.
Okay. Could the council expand on what it is that we're looking for in that document? We're already through the approval process with the watershed district, they've given conditional approval in that regard, so I'm just not sure what additional documentation is being requested of us there.
While Luke is answering, I'll... Go ahead, Luke.
Okay. So, Commissioner, the association document is essentially a private agreement between the TLC Vet Clinic, Vet Hospital, this site, and then the North Star site, to ensure proper maintenance, proper maintenance and repair of the private sanitary and sewer lines. And it's a safeguard to prevent any future disputes going on in the future. Because it's a shared system, there has to be some type of shared ownership or sole entity that can address any issues.
So I guess my question for that is, why me? You have TLC Vet Clinic has a multimillion-dollar facility, Marley's, again, over $3 million, and then the North Star Mini Storage, this building will be under $800,000. So to put the requirement, I guess, on me to get all of them in agreement and draft an agreement, I'm confused as to why that's on my requirement and maybe not on Marley's or the existing North Star Mini Storage, since it's their PUD.
Luke?
And this gets into private matter, but this is a recommendation from the city to eliminate those disputes. If there's a negotiation between those private parties to how they can address such an agreement, get to shared costs for the legal work that's needed for that, that's between the private parties. But that's just a strong recommendation from the city engineer.
The next question, I'm guessing she's going to ask, does such an association agreement exist between the two existing tenants now, TLC and the rental space?
Yep. So, Mr. Chair, according to the Washington County Recorder's Office, we checked, there is no such agreement, at least on file, with a county recorder. That's typically the place that such an agreement would be documented and filed.
But you're just asking for a recommendation. This is a recommendation, it's not a requirement.
It's a recommendation, Commissioner. It's in the best interest of all the private parties to have such association agreement in place.
But it is listed as a requirement in your 11, the 11 different items that are required, is that correct? Is that one of those?
Seven.
So this is a... The resolution contains conditions of approval that staff is recommending. Planning commission, of course, is a recommending body that will bring forward the conditions to the city council for consideration.
Okay. Well, I guess to provide clarification, I'm in full support of all of the other requirements, including the site plan for the proof of parking spaces, and we provided clarification on the trash enclosure, clarification on the exterior materials, the licensed landscape architect, all of those, the photometric study, and the permit for the sign, where I, again, am voicing my concern, is this requirement for a shared sewer and sanitary system agreement being my responsibility. And then also, there's nothing, as Luke stated, exists already between TLC and North Star. So that's a concern that I have. Everything else is agreeable in terms of timeliness of allowing these conditions to be met through the architect and the builder.
Any further questions? Anything further from you?
No.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I don't recall if I opened it, but I opened the public forum. If there's anyone in attendance who wishes to come forward to make comment on this issue, please come forward. Seeing none, I close the public forum. Bring it back. Any discussion amongst commissioners?
Since we are just... I guess I have just one on the 11 for the shared storm sewer. I guess, because we're just advising this, this goes to the city council, just to clarify, so we can have this on here, and then ultimately, the city council will make that decision whether they really need to have that or not.
Whether it's included or not, yes.
Right. But we can approve it on our part, just so it goes to the city council, so they can review it.
Yep.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Question. Would the applicant have an opportunity to sort of speak up about his conditions at the city council level?
Yes, for sure.
Anyone further? Then I would look for a motion.
One second. What happens now with that condition 11? With the other three parties, say something goes wrong with their shared storm sewer, who's responsible for it?
That's a dispute between those parties. That's a private system, the city is not involved, but that's why we're recommending some type of association document be created to prevent those disputes in the future.
Okay.
So the one caveat I would bring up is, let's say TLC and the storage facility doesn't want to enter into it, that doesn't make it binding for her to have to do anything with that, I'm assuming. Because if there's no consensus in the association, you can't force that upon them.
Right. That's correct. That's correct, Chair.
Okay. So that would have to be like a condominium association, bringing forth a shared responsibility for the sewer system. It would be prorated somehow, based on how much they use it, I assume. But, okay.
Purely a recommendation.
Would you like to come forward to make comment on that?
Yeah, I just want to... I believe we have a resident here who didn't understand really what open forum was. It's at your discretion whether or not you reopen it, but I just wanted to make sure that the commission was aware that there was someone here that wanted to speak.
That was my request.
Yeah, so, I didn't mean to interrupt you guys, but I just wanted to make sure that you knew, and, Ellis, as the chair, it is at your discretion.
Is this for the open forum, or is it in regards to this resolution here?
It's a public hearing on this resolution, so...
Yeah, it's up to you, but I want to make sure you knew.
Okay, open public hearing again.
Sorry. My name's Montague Halkus. I live at 7588 Fifteenth Street Lane, basically on the other side of the hill from where they're going to be building.
On the east, further east side?
Yes, further east. And my only concern is, I'm thinking about the noise and maybe even the smell. I have a dog myself, and he gets into things, and I'm just wondering what would be the address to that.
In the document, it says, barking and howling dogs will be brought in as soon as they begin.
Okay. Maybe this question is more for the applicant, but would the inside then be soundproofed in some way?
I can't comment on that, but there are other facilities, at least two other in the city, that are providing similar services, and as far as I know, there have been no complaints about either of those.
Okay.
I can't guarantee that, my statement does not bind anything, but that's just my observation.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Sure. I'll ask once again if there's anybody else that wishes to come forward to make comment.
I can provide clarification on that. Yes, there is soundproofing. We also have, all the walls and the kennels are solid, and they're glass-front. It is of our utmost importance that we limit the barking for the well-being of the dogs. So some dogs end up staying within our facility for several weeks, and consistent barking is actually a large contributor to the dogs deteriorating behaviorally. So there's significant measures that are taken to ensure that barking is limited. In terms of cleanliness, the facility is cleaned daily, deep cleaned twice a week. The outdoor area is all turf, and there's a specific wash that you put on that turf to take care of any type of smell and make sure that there's no bacteria or viruses that are spreading, so. Okay.
And so, once again, I'll ask if there's anybody else in attendance who wishes to come forward to make comment. Seeing none, hopefully there are none. I close the public hearing again. Bring it back. I think we're at the point of bringing a motion forward.
Okay. I will make a motion to recommend approval of the planned unit development amendment, the conditional use permit, and the site plan for an animal impound and kennel facility at 1480 Helmo Avenue North, with conditions as outlined.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, motion passes. The next one is staff is on update.
Thank you, Chair. So we want to provide an update on the zoning and subdivision code update project that we brought to you last month. So at the May 28th city council workshop, we received additional input from the city council on this project. Next steps are that the project team, city staff and HKGI, we're going to work on, we're going to hold stakeholder engagement meetings, and then coming soon is the conclusion of the code diagnosis, and then after the diagnosis is complete, then we'll start drafting ordinance changes over the summer, and then we'll bring it back to the planning commission for review, likely in the fall, early fall. The other update I have is for the July planning commission meeting. That will be moved to the 11th because of the holiday, and do plan on having a meeting in July. So we have a couple of applications on file. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions for Luke? Thank you. Next is commissioner updates. Anyone have any information or update that they wish to make? Seeing none? Council liaison? Council member, Englebricks?
The big news of the day, the ALDI groundbreaking up on 34th Street is happening next Monday. So I know that there's been a lot of inquiring minds. It's going to get built. So, any questions for me? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. I look for a motion to adjourn.
So who?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I take it none oppose. Meeting is closed. adjourned.